Somebody stall, I'll be ready.
Get it and get started. Everybody will please mute or turn off their phones, appreciate it. We will stand for our invocation and then our pledge. But Father, we thank you for how much and what you are. We thank you for the, just the things, the characteristics about you that we can't even comprehend and that we can never touch. And we thank you that despite your greatness, you love us despite our many imperfections. We thank you for the position that you've put us in to take care of this town, and we don't take it lightly. And we ask that we will humbly do so in appropriate fashion. And thank you for blessing us with this town and the people in it. In Christ's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Our first public comment period is for matters that do not appear on the agenda. So if you have any comments, we welcome you to come at this time. You'll have three minutes. We ask you to fill out a form for our clerk and please state your name and address. Right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a matter for public hearing tonight. And so our environmental specialist will come and she will give us a brief presentation first. And you want to stay where you are or you want to come up?
Do you all have a question?
I'll tell you what, why don't you come up here since not everybody can see you? Yeah, that's right.
All right, can you hear me okay? I know I talk kind of quiet. Thank you all. And thank you in advance for bearing with me. This is pretty dense. Please don't hesitate to interrupt if you have any questions on anything. So applicant East Group Properties, LP, has submitted a petition for a stream buffer variance at parcel 0726068 for three existing intermittent streams in two locations along the eastern property line. And page 23 of the packet, I kind of made a bigger map just for your reference that shows the location of those streams and their buffers. The variance request consists of stream buffer and setback encroachments in two locations, ones on the northeast side of the property, others on the southeast side of the property. And if you would like to go to page 32 of that packet, the applicant submitted a plan that shows the proposed buffer and setback encroachment in both locations in a more detailed fashion. Mine was just a general overview so you could see the streams on the property, kind of how that looks. So the, on, gosh, I gotta orient myself. Okay. So right now, you can see the southeastern portion of the encroachment. That's where, if you guys would like me to go into detail a little bit more on what's going on there, okay. So what I will do is get my sheet out so I can see, see it a little bit. All right, so on the, okay, so the southern, the southeastern area where there's encroachment, there is about 34,690 feet of stream buffer encroachment, 14,730 feet of impervious area setback encroachment. So that is where the majority of that is. On the northeast portion of the property, there is 16,966 square feet of encroachment. You can kind of see, they did the legend in there for you with the kind of red and green hash marks. Just to kind of give a visual, where you see the hash marks through that stream area is where the encroachment would be proposed. Oh, yes, and there's on the northeastern area, there's 3,434 square feet of impervious area setback encroachment. So this is kind of just a basic overview of, again, what's going on. And to give us a point of reference, I'll go a little bit more into the property and everything. But first, I just wanted to introduce the topic. But before I move on, did you guys have any questions for me about the proposed encroachment in the plan submitted by the applicant?
Not yet, just keep going.
You go, okay. All right, so your decision to grant or deny the variance request is necessary for Scott and I, engineering and environmental staff, to complete a detailed site plan review because if the variance was not granted, they would have to modify the site plan enough that, yeah, we kind of just need, we need to know the basic information of whether or not they will be allowed to encroach because it will affect the numbers from like an engineering, environmental standpoint. And so that's why this is coming up. It's part of the processes that this comes before you. Review and approval of any other environmentally sensitive area encroachments that are under state or federal agency jurisdiction will still need to be reviewed by them, but ours is specifically for the local stream buffers and it is kind of looked at with a different standard. So the federal and state standards are very heavily based in mitigation. And the local standard per the ordinance is very much focused on hardship, which I will continue to kind of carve out for you guys. I'm laying the groundwork right now. So in this situation as staff, variance applications can be granted on a case-by-case basis if the applicant submits appropriate information essentially showing how much the buffer was encroached in and provides documentation of extreme hardship, which will be their responsibility to present that information to you to kind of make that determination. The town, and so my, my staff determination is that I want to walk you through how the ordinance is structured and kind of provide a framework for what's proposed on the property in big, bigger terms and how that relates to the ordinance so that you guys feel like you can make an informed decision that'll be the best suited for the town. So in terms of the, all the boxes that are right next to each other, like the table, with, you know, existing water features, all that kind of stuff, you can look at that in reference to the map, but essentially some big picture numbers. So there's existing water features on the property. There's three intermittent streams. That's our main focus because that's where the town ordinance applies. There's a pond and there's wetlands as well. It is a groundwater recharge area. It's a 60.9 acre property. And the proposed disturbance per their current plan, you can see that on page 33. It's kind, it's essentially, they're proposing to disturb 59.5 acres or about 97.7% of the total site area. And that is, of that 59.5 acres, about, about 1.6 acres of that would include the buffer and setback encroachment they proposed. So on the property, they want, they're proposing to have about 60.8% impervious cover. And it's in the Whitewater Creek watershed. So these were just some big picture items to kind of outline. I promise it's going to get a little bit more related to the ordinance. But did you guys, based on kind of my, what I have presented so far, do you guys have any questions?
Just clarity on one point. When you talked about on the existing water feature section, you said that's, that the intermittent, three intermittent streams are really the part that we're going to focus on?
Correct.
Is that really the part we're going to focus on or is that all we need to focus on? In other words, what do we have responsibility for or custody of?
We have responsibility of and custody for the intermittent stream buffers.
In the story. So don't focus on the ponds or the pond or the, okay.
Correct. Thank you. All right. So, sorry, we said thank you at the same time. All right. So the next two sections are not specific to this applicant's request. They are sections from the ordinance that are provided for your reference that might be relevant. It just talks about the buffer and setback requirements for land development, but the big thing that's going to lead into you all's first decision of the night is whether the variance can be considered or not. So variance will only be considered, you know, if unusual circumstances were strict adherence to the minimum buffer requirements and the article would create an extreme hardship. And so this is the decision, the first decision that's up to council and it's what has to be, the decision that has to be made kind of first before looking at the other items. So going into, before we get into what's below, items in ordinance compatibility and stream impact considerations, items one through five are there to kind of provide a framework for hardship. It's kind of like how Philip has done variance requests. It's got the consideration and there's some staff information that's outlined in there. But one through five, that's kind of the first, the first thing. And if one through five, you hear the information there, you hear their presentation, that's kind of the first thing that needs to be decided because if no, there's no hardship that's been determined. Six and seven are informative, but they're not something that is part of hardship. So they're to be considered after you determine hardship. Now I can go into those, which is really sort of the big heftier part of my report. But before I go into the compatibility considerations, do you guys have any questions? So the first factor that was assessed, would a strict adherence to the minimal buffer requirements create an extreme hardship? It's the most general, but strict adherence to the minimal buffer requirements would reduce buildable area on the site. It would prevent the applicant from utilizing the areas on the property that are included in the stream buffers and impervious area setbacks to the extent proposed in their petition. Strict adherence to the minimal buffer requirements would require the applicant to reconfigure the conceptual site development plan, which is prepared as a supplemental document for the purposes of a rezoning petition. And then kind of tying it back into what I was talking about earlier, the determination of whether or not adherence to these minimum requirements would create an extreme hardship is the council's decision. And it is necessary in order to consider everything else. So it kind of creates, the other things are secondary, but that is kind of where this is going from here. Do you have, so then moving on to number two, this is also still in that hardship-related category. Are there extraordinary, exceptional, or peculiar conditions pertaining to the particular piece of land in question that wouldn't apply to other properties with similar requirements? Compared to other properties of similar size in Tyrone that are large undeveloped properties, sorry. The property has neither exceptional or peculiar number of water features nor a proportion of the property's total acreage that would be considered unbuildable for the town's ordinances. So that's the first piece of things because that, and that's kind of why the numbers above are provided. You have the total acreage for the property and then you have the area they're proposing to disturb, which is a substantial portion of the property. And then the area that that's within the buffer and setback, those kind of, that's kind of what those acreage numbers are for in that table is to give a point of reference. So the next part of this is would literal interpretation of this ordinance deprive them of any rights that others with similar site conditions are afforded? And so literal interpretation of this ordinance would not deprive them of rights afforded to others with similar site conditions. The town's stream buffer protection ordinance was adopted by the town council in 2007. And the buffer and setback requirements outlined in that ordinance have been applied to similar proposed land development activities, which means other proposed developments since this ordinance has been passed have complied with the stream buffer ordinance requirements or been exempted based on specific conditions that don't apply here. So do you guys have any questions on these first couple items?
In your professional opinion, is this going to cause a hardship if we, if we grant them the variance?
I,
If we don't.
Huh?
If we don't grant the variance.
Well, if, well, either way.
Oh, gosh. I didn't want to have to.
Well, I know, but we're kind of, we're kind of depending on your expertise.
The ordinance specifically states that it, that's your decision.
Okay.
It kind of puts staff in a, in a hard position to ask that question. All we can do is present the facts and let you all make that determination. Oh, he actually lives. I may.
Near, please.
What is the regional standard for a buff, for a buffer?
So Tyrone adopted the minimum requirement for the Atlanta region with the 50-foot buffer and 25-foot setback. So this is not an atypical amount of.
Our buffer, our buffer is the minimum regional standard.
Correct. And what, and thank you, Brandon, for kind of coming in there because I really, I, yeah, I feel, I just don't want to take a stance either way because I feel like it is y'all's decision. I want to give deference to, no, 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 no. I appreciate the question. And so, yeah, I kind of going more into my professional opinion on this. So hardship, what we have so far is, is the piece of site and a, does it have like a lot more land essentially that would be affected by these buffers than the average lot of the same size? It does not. Would they be deprived of a right that someone else was afforded with the same kind of conditions? No, this would, no. So the next consideration under hardship would be the unusual conditions and circumstances. Are they the result of any application, any actions of the applicant? So this is, part of the staff report is based on how I pieced through information provided in their petition to what seemed to be most relevant for determining ordinance compatibility and putting kind of a framework to that. All that being said, there, there's mention of approval of a site plan. And I'll let them present their portion of things, but this is just to provide some clarity on what was approved. What was approved was a conceptual development plan and that's not like a site plan formally, like that's reviewed by the technical review committee in detail. So Philip, Scott, me, Water System, et cetera. And to deny their proposal for what they were submitting that document for, which was to a rezoning petition, it was a big conceptual overview, wouldn't have necessarily been a, something that Philip could do because that's, it is to show a general idea. It's not to show, you get to do all of this necessarily. So that is one consideration. And then adherence to minimum stream buffer requirements and zoning buffer requirements is not considered an unusual condition or circumstance. However, the required construction of a multi-use path is an unusual condition. With appropriate alternative site design, however, the path could be incorporated in the plans in a manner that would not require local stream buffer variance. So the last consideration that's related to hardship directly more so is whether alternative designs, which are possible, which require less intrusion or no intrusion. One of the requirements for a stream buffer variance petition is either to provide an alternative site design with no or less intrusion or a justification statement as to why that's not feasible. So alternative site designs that require no or less intrusion are possible, but would require a reduction in the buildable area on site shown in the conceptual development plan. The applicant has not provided an alternative site plan. They provided the justification statement, which is that the business park and multi-use path is proposed and approved in the conceptual development plan would be undevelopable without the use of the existing stream areas shown in their variance petition exhibit. And so those five things are really the first, that is what factors into hardship. And number six and seven are factors to be considered after it is determined whether or not there's an extreme hardship created. So do you all have any questions for me? I know, sorry.
Maybe later. Does anybody have anything at this time?
At the moment, right now, no.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing.
You don't want to hear six and seven?
I thought you were just saying that you didn't, you weren't going to present that portion because it didn't have any, have to do with hardship. Absolutely. If it's on your docket to present, you go for it.
I was just going to say, so we can frame it this way. If you do determine there's an extreme hardship, here's the two other big factors that would come into play. Relief if granted would not be injurious to the public health, safety, environment, and general welfare or impair the purposes and intents of these regulations. You know, with, the purpose of this regulation is to protect public health and safety, the environment and general welfare, minimize public and private losses due to erosion, siltation, water pollution, and maintain stream water quality by creating buffers zones along streams in the town for protection of water resources and minimizing land development within such buffers by establishing buffer zones which require prior authorization. In other words, a variance that's specifically approved by council. So the purpose and intent of the ordinance, oh, here we go. Regarding the, oh, yeah, the purpose and intent of the ordinance. When you're granting variance requests, though allowed by the ordinance, should be kept to a practicable minimum to protect water quality, provide for stormwater infiltration, preserve wildlife habitats, scenic and recreational value, and minimize flood risks from future developments. So there, any one individual project is not going to be injurious to the public health if they're meeting the minimum environmental standard, which they are. Does it impair the purposes or intents of this regulation? The big thing here is, for me, is that the practicable minimum. So I totally skipped over this earlier because I'm kind of nervous and I feel bad because I know everyone's tired, this is long. But one thing that's important with hardship and the other considerations in general is because there's a lot, I'm sure as y'all are very aware, there's a lot of proposed development in Tyrone. So the decision to grant or deny the requested variance will be viewed as precedent by people seeking to apply for stream buffer variances in the future. And so while each individual project is not going to have, you know, if it's engineered to a certain standard, which we'll touch on in the next section, any individual thing is made to be mitigated, but it's not eliminated, if that makes sense, the impact. So as you continue to, you, we want to be, as a town, very judicious and consistent when determining hardship because if someone else applies for the same variance and everyone is trying to apply for a variance, we want to make sure that one person's hardship would be equivalent to another person, you know, that there's appropriate justification for granting that variance to them. So the last portion is long-term and construction water quality impacts of the proposed variance and whether issuance of the variance is at least protective, as protective of natural resources and the environment. So I already touched on the minimum standard. The applicant proposed additional green infrastructure for infiltration of the stormwater, namely bioretention areas and some vegetative filter strips as onsite mitigation. Based on a preliminary staff review, the engineering practices proposed for the site appear to satisfy best engineering practices and standards. And again, this was a general broader view. It all looked, all looked right. They will still be subject to detailed site plan review. So while proposed mitigation is a factor, and this is related to is it at least as protective of natural resources and the environment, that cumulative impact on the local watersheds of each variance should be taken into consideration. These best engineering practices, they mitigate the impacts, but they are not purported or intended to eliminate all of the impacts. So I can go into more detail on that if you all have questions, you know, at whatever point in this, you might have more questions for me on that. I just wanted to give a broad overview of that information. So that would conclude my part of the presentation unless you guys have more questions for me.
I do, just for, just clarification as well. Most of this is going to be taking place towards the 74 portion of the property, correct, as opposed to the, the eastern portion of the property? Yes or no?
It's, it's pretty like, so the proposed disturbed acreage is 97.7% of the site. So right now, with what we're looking at, it's going to be almost all of the site.
So with it being towards that eastern or that back portion of the property, how is that going to, how is that going to affect the multi-use path that's going to be, that hopefully will be developed back there?
So the multi-use path is So, the multi-use path is, within the existing easement, they, you would have to cross the stream to install the multi-use path in that 50-foot easement that they show. However, you can still construct a multi-use path within the easement without triggering the need for a local stream buffer variance. So, stream crossings that are just crossings for transportation routes, which this would be, are exempt from the ordinance. The problem is, well, not the problem, but the reason this triggers a variance, the need for a variance, at least the portion related to the multi-use path, is because there, there is grading and disturbance that is contiguous to the path. It's not simply a crossing which would be lower impact.
But it could be argued that us asking them to install the multi-use path has created something of a hardship, if, but in no other way, cost.
It, it's an unusual circumstance, and it's definitely a cost for them.
That might be a legal question. I don't know if that was a legal question or if that was a you question, but it certainly is something that we created.
Good statement on your behalf, Mr. Mayor.
The variance that they're requesting, how is that going to affect the property to the north of that? The Sandy Creek corners, if you will, once that, you know, once and if that decides to get developed? Will that have an effect on that?
It, I would have to look at a topography map at a larger scale. But, what I will say is, because of other district regional requirements, this is where the drinking water supply watershed comes in. We are required by the district to keep the impervious area in a watershed, and these are big. We have, like, all of Tyrone has parts of four different watersheds. So, these are many acres, this is not the, you know, one site can have more impervious area than the total watershed requirement, but they're not allowed to go over 25%. So, sorry, now I'm getting into the technical details too much, which I was trying to. But essentially, the impacts would be mitigated regardless. Would it have some, would it potentially, you know, in some ways, influence the water quality and the receiving waters? It might have an impact, but it would be difficult to put an exact number on it without a really detailed.
So your answer is possibly, but not significant.
Not, yes, not substantial for this one project.
Devin, thank you. I appreciate you.
Good job. All right, so now I have a public hearing. If y'all are, anybody have a question? And so I believe there's someone here that like, would like to speak in support of this request. And we have, we allow 10 minutes for the petitioner, split up however you'd like.
Mayor, before I begin, I'd like to request an extra time on this because we, obviously with Devin's presentation, there's a lot to discuss. We don't want to be rushed with it. We want the town council to be fully informed. I was going to suggest 15 minutes each side, if that's okay.
Well, I think that's, I wish I'd known about this a little bit in advance. But councillor, first of all, whose decision is it? Is it council's decision to increase that amount of time? Since 10 minutes is what we allow? Or do we have the option of giving the 10 minutes and then using a few minutes for questions? This is uncharted territory, so I need you to advise me on how I should address this. Or is it, is it my decision?
You shouldn't have any time allotted against the petitioner for questions you ask. You've set 10 minutes typically for zoning matters. This is, isn't really a zoning matter, it's, it is a public hearing. You do have discretion as a body to increase that if you choose to do so, if the circumstances warrant. And with respect to you being the person who leads the meeting and part of the order of the meeting, you certainly would have the discretion to do so if the condition.
You have 15 minutes.
Thank you, sir. I'm Rick Lindsey, I'm here representing East Group Properties. You guys probably have seen my face way too often, good evening again. Tonight we have John Coleman and John Ratliff, as we did before, representing the company. The client, my client now owns the property, so they've closed and they've purchased it from the Hobgood family. It is zoned M1, and it does have that planned industrial park development plan in place, which is what you guys were looking at when we met back in August. It was a change of the development plan for the business park and studio. And you guys approved that back in August. The plan that we've presented is really the identical to what you saw once in August and the planning commission saw twice. We went before them in the winter, then had to go for the developmental, excuse me, the regional development impact, if I can say that, and we had to come back before them in July. So it's the same plan, we haven't changed it. And we showed these water areas, these stream areas on those plans when we presented them to you. Again, not asking for approval of them, I want to make sure you understood we're not changing. We're not doing any shell game here. And I understand what Devin is saying, it's not a little impact. If this were a little impact, we would not be here this evening. This, if we are not granted the variance, is going to result in a 20% decrease in the buildables space of the property because of where the buildings are located, how they're built, and whatnot. I'm going to allow or ask John Coleman to discuss that later with you in more detail.
May I stop you a second?
Sure.
I stopped the clock. Can I ask him a question right now? I looked at the square footage of all of these buildings, both first phase and future and all of that. I added up all the square footage, and then I looked at what would be taken away if you were completely denied the request for a variance. My, my numbers came out to, we're talking about 7% of the square footage of the development. Can you tell me how we go from 7 to 20?
I'll ask Mr. Coleman to go more detail about that. But my understanding is we will lose that one building where the, I guess it's like the southern kind of eastern building. It's completely gone because of the economies of scale, how it has to be constructed, so that will be gone.
You don't lose half the building, you lose the entire building.
Lose the whole building, right. And then we have a similar result for the building that's north of that. But in addition, and Mr. Campbell, this is what addresses your question that you asked. We will find it virtually impossible, if not impossible, to put in the multi-use path because it has to go in the eastern side of the property, or we put it where the vehicles are, and you have safety issues. I don't know if you guys heard the horrible accident that happened on Friday evening with a teenager down in Peachtree City where a golf cart was T-boned by a car. And I think it was at the intersection of the Parkway and Robinson Road. And I understand, I don't know if this is true, but I understand he was life flatted out with very serious injuries, which is what we discussed back during the rezoning part, that we were going to put it on the east side, it was really the only place to do it. In addition to that, the town approved the plat that was recorded back in 2018 that shows the easement for the multi-use path on the eastern border. So because of putting that there, that again goes across some of these stream areas, and we're going to have to impact those, need the variance from the city. Now, just because we get a variance, that doesn't end it there, we have to mitigate. And we're mitigating by like more than 50% greater than what the impact is. And I'll let the engineer talk more about that. So it's not like we just, you know, kind of destroy the property and leave it there. No, we have to make it better than it was before. And the Corps of Engineers and Georgia EPD will be seriously involved in that to make sure that our mitigation efforts are sufficient. But our proposal, what our engineer is showing is that we're going far beyond those requirements. The other areas, like I said, that are, that we're asking the variance for do protrude a little bit more into the property. And again, those two buildings I was discussing with you, Mr. Mayor, just a few minutes ago. So I would submit to you that a 20% reduction in the buildable space or the building footprint is an extreme hardship. And then I would also submit to you that every piece of property is different and unique. And particularly when you're here in the southeast and have the rolling hills, you're going to have some streams and some intermittent streams, and they need to be addressed. It doesn't mean you just go in there and get rid of them, you got to mitigate, but we're going to do that. And so while this is a variance request and the criteria that needs to be used for the council considering the request, each property is different. And unlike a zoning, precedential value is really minimal, you just got to use the criteria. So again, as I said a few minutes ago, John Coleman's going to get up next and talk about the hardship, the history of the property. And also Wesley Reed is our civil engineer, and he's going to talk about more of the technical matters.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're at 12:23. Left.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Town Council, my name's John Coleman, I'm with East Group Properties, good to see you again. We also have John Ratliff with East Group, and then Wesley and Johanna with our civil engineer, Everly. And then our Courtney, our broker, who was actually involved in the original land sale and has been, some good news on some activity. You're well aware of the site, we've been working on the site for a year now. So it's very exciting to be where we are. During that year, we successfully completed the DRI process for the size of development and had unanimous approvals for the rezoning and zoning site plan from both the planning department and the town council. When we started this process, we want to say we're going to partnership with the town, and that's still our intent. We want to develop a quality technology park on Highway 74. We're a long-term owner, so we're not going anywhere. We're going to put up a quality product with quality architecture and landscaping, signage controls, because we're going to own this for 50, 70 years. So, we're going to partner with you. Part of that is we're working on those architectural elevations as part of the rezoning. We have a condition that we have to come back to council with our architecture for your review. So we're going to comply with that condition of zoning, and that's part of the overlay district that we understand. And you've seen photos of our other buildings, I think you'll be pleased with what we bring to you for review. Courtney, we talked earlier, we're seeing strong initial interest by some biomed companies, technology and electronic manufacturers. So, we feel very good about doing the jobs and the quality companies to this location. Our intent is to put the site into production. Our engineers submitted the site for a land disturbance permit. And this is our first development in Tyrone. So, we had no idea there was really a variance required for the stream buffer. After, when we closed on the property, we had no knowledge of a variance requirement. Our site plan, as you can see here, you know, fully disclosed during the entire process that we were going to impact this area. We put it on the plan for everyone to see, and this area, the stream, the multi-use path that goes through it. We do this with all our properties, full disclosure. We never once were told, hey, be careful, just so you know, there's going to be a variance request that you're going to have to go through, land disturbance permit. We went through, through public hearings, and then the existing easement also threw us because we, that was, that was recorded with the town. Okay, so there's an easement for the multi-use path, so that's, goes through this area. So, you know, to us, it was all on the movie studio site plan. It included encroachments into this area that was part of that site plan that was approved also. So our expectation, incorrectly now, but our expectation when we got through the final zoning hearing, was that there was an understanding with the town that this area would be disturbed. And a disclosure to us before we closed would have been great, because then we would have had knowledge, okay, there is an issue on coverage here. But not once, and actually with the unanimous approval that we received across the board, we thought we were ready to move forward. Based on the Corps of Engineers, this is a 60-acre site, there's one half acre of impact. And I'm going to let our engineers talk to that. It's a little bit different than Devin's calculations, and there's a reason for that. But because of the minor impact of a half an acre from the Corps' perspective, this falls within the nationwide permit category. We have three other sites in metro Atlanta that we're working through the same process. And they have very similar conditions. It's hard to find a site of this size in Atlanta without some kind of stream or wetland impact. You asked about the site to the north. There's likely, there's likely impact there too, you know, and that would affect, you know, that, their ability to develop, just like the coverage affects us. What typically happens with those municipalities is they defer to the state and federal review for the mitigation requirements, and including Fayette County. They defer to those two, those two authorities. We have already submitted those permits. Before we knew about the variance, we submitted our impact analysis to the Corps and the state and the federal, we're waiting for those feedbacks. The initial feedback is that we've budgeted $600,000 mitigation payment for, for payment to those agencies from East Group Properties. And that's part of that mitigation process. Again, we want to partner with the town. When we found out about the buffer requirement, we sat down with Phillip and Devin and talked about additional mitigation that we wanted to propose above and beyond what we had to do with the Corps to be a good partner. And that was the green infrastructure, the bioretention, and that was part of our variance request. My understanding, I'll let the engineers talk to it, that the actual square footage of the additional mitigation that we proposed was equal to or greater than what the impact was. And I'm, I'm going to let them confirm that or deny that. But that was our intent, was to at least offer up enough mitigation that would offset our impact into those streams. Mainly filtration, and we're going to actually filter the runoff on the multi-use path that would then be discharged onto the other site. We were going to go ahead and filter that so there was no negative discharge hardship. For our variance includes us closing on the property without knowledge of a variance requirement. This is important because without the variance, we will reduce our building coverage by 20%. This building, although it looks like you could cut it in half, the size of that building would not be efficient for us to build on that size. So we would, this is probably the smallest building actually on the site, as you can see. It's only 100,000 square feet. That really limits, and then this is very two-dimensional, you don't, you can't see the transition of the grades. I'll let, again, let the engineer talk to that. But then there's a transition that even brings this even to a smaller footprint. So our initial calculation was that this building would, no, we did calculate reducing this building size. We'd have to shift this parking up and then loop it through here, and then again, transition the grades away from that stream buffer area. But we, we're not losing that building, but we did, we did transition. So, but that was the biggest impact with that, that square footage. So, with the 20%, you know, in a normal course of business, we would have had that a contingency, a closing contingency with the seller. We would have said, hey, it was already contingent on zoning. We would have made it contingent on the, on the variance request, which we didn't do because we didn't have knowledge. The reduction of 150,000 square feet is equal, is equivalent to about $20 million of total value. If you look at just land value from the FAR per land foot, it would be about $1.1 million. We would have reduced our purchase price with the seller, but we closed. In addition to the square footage, I think it translates into fewer jobs and less tax revenue. And, and it could limit our ability to move forward with this project. I mean, that's a, that's a major shift that we would have to take a look at. I guess good news for us is zoned M1 now, and we would probably have several other people interested in the site. But we think our quality of building, our photographs is just a great match for what the town is looking for and what we can, we can develop. And again, if we had disclosure, this would, this would not have been an issue. And as Rick mentioned, without the variance, we cannot build the multi-use path as shown on the approved zoning plan, again. Also, it would further reduce our coverage also that we're already taking a hit on. So we think that's a big hardship, extreme hardship for not only the overall project, but for the town. Because that's a key part, we think, of this, and that was going to be constructed at our own cost for the multi-use path. Again, our confusion is, you know, that there's an existing easement agreement from 2018 that's in place to accommodate the multi-use path that we felt was there for a reason. It was clearly located in the stream buffer, so I guess shame on us for not knowing. But, you know, it was, it was, it was a surprise to us, that was a requirement. And then to try to squeeze the multi-use path in the buffer area, we think is a double standard where you're trying to make that happen for the town, but then not work with us on our, our overall site plan. So, I'm running out of time here. You know, important part of this variance request is the additional mitigation. So I'm going to turn it over to our civil engineers unless you have any questions for me.
We'll save our questions for you, so that they can have their time.
Good evening, my name's Wesley Reed with Everly and Associates. Just want to, I'm going to touch on a couple of different things. But Everly and Associates is mainly a metro Atlanta firm. Then we work in over like 60 jurisdictions in metro Atlanta, which goes pretty wide. But... We had to go through the Army Corps of Engineers, we had to go through the state EPD, but we did not have to do a public hearing for the buffer variance. So I don't think that, although it's not the, Tyrone is not the only one, there are certainly more that do, that do not require that public hearing variance process, more administrative. If you get the EPD, you get this. So just wanted to touch on that. Another thing, that the total disturbance, we are disturbing a significant portion of the site as was noted by staff. Just 10% of that is just the buffer and the multi-use path. There's also, I would say, 5% that is the barm that's across 74 that we also agreed to install. We can see the grain across the top, so that's another percentage of the, you know, 5%, let's say of the, of the site. So although yes, we are disturbing, disturbing a significant portion of the site, there are zoning requirements and requirements that we have that are increasing that disturbance than what would have happened if those requirements were not a part of the zoning. Also wanted to just talk about the stream. So the streams that we're disturbing are intermittent streams, which is the technical term. There's three types, ephemeral, intermittent and perennial. Perennial is what you, is the, are the nice streams that you see that are flowing year round, the brooks, the, you know, they have rocks in them. Ephemeral streams really flow during wet times. Now, they, you know, let's just say we had a rain event, we had some pretty heavy rain from the, from the last storm this past weekend. I didn't go out there today, I doubt it's still flowing. They flow for, let's just say, 72 hours. If you get constant rain for weeks and weeks and weeks, it may flow longer than that, but an intermittent stream does not flow. In the fall, an intermittent stream will wash, you won't have leaves in the stream. That's, that's where you can really tell it's an intermittent stream. If you went out there now, it would have washed the leaves out, but the leaves will fall back in it. The stream impacts, so the stream impacts are what we go through the Army Corps of Engineers and, and submit for and have the Army Corps review that. So the three streams, total square footage, which is what we have to submit for, 184, so 184, 171 and 558. So we're talking around 1,000 total square feet of actual stream. So of the actual stream channel, we're only talking 1,000 square feet. So the numbers look big, but that's taken 50 feet on, on all sides of those streams. And 50 feet is the, is the, you had mentioned earlier, what is the standard across? That is, that is the standard. So the, the stream buffers are typically what they are in the other jurisdictions. We also, the Whitewater Creek watershed. So in watersheds, the EPD requires, if you're within seven miles of the intake of that watershed, you have 100 and 150-foot buffers. So they really, that seven miles upstream of it, they really take seriously. We're not, we're, at one point, I calculated how far we're up and I got so far that I quit calculating it. We're well over seven miles. I think the intake is, is below Peachtree City. I can't remember exactly, but it is well over seven miles. So the EPD doesn't consider the impact at this point as critical as if you were within that seven miles. Talking about the mitigation efforts, so we, we did it in the zoning plan, we did have a bio retention area shown, always anticipated to be there as part of our stormwater treatment. We've added an additional one, we've added the filter strips, which we feel that, if you add, take that square footage of what we've added, that is, that basically is the same square footage of what we're impacting in the stream buffer. So we feel that that's good. The, the reason you, you have stream buffers is to help treat that water, help infiltrate that water. And we feel that the mitigation we're providing onsite as well as the mitigation, the 600,000 that John was speaking on, that's off-site mitigation. So somewhere else in the watershed, may not be in the city of Tyrone, maybe south of here, maybe north, that $600,000 will go into what's called a mitigation bank. So you have, a large landowner has a stream that comes, goes through his property that is, that a lot of times it's on agricultural land, which agricultural land is the worst for streams because you have all the fertilizers, everything. They'll mitigate, they'll actually, they will, they will use that $600,000 to enhance those stream buffers to protect, and that's, that's where the off-site mitigation comes. So that's what will be done with that $600,000. You know, a lot of, a lot of the impacts in the stream are what's needed to properly serve the building, the parking, the fire access around the buildings. We can't just lop off, you know, some of that drive, some of that parking. If we do that to try to save square footage, then we don't have fire access, we don't have circulation for the fire trucks. So we feel that it's important that you can't just lop off the, you know, mitigate or take away the impacts that are right in that stream buffer. You have to take away more so that you can continue that circulation.
Go ahead, go ahead and wrap up. I stopped it.
No, thank you. I didn't want interruptions. I think I've covered all the points, so I'm happy to answer any questions and I appreciate your, your attention tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, is anybody else here that would like to speak in support of this request? We'll come back to you guys. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, hearing none. Questions from council?
I have one. You mentioned that in other cities, once you get the EPD, you get the variance. Did you get the EPD on this?
Actually, we said submitted that we were going to have to get. We're still well within that, but we will not, our plans, we'll submit. After, we won't get a permit.
of variance? I didn't know we were somewhat of a unicorn.
I don't think you're a unicorn. He cited the one jurisdiction, Union City does the same thing you do. They have public hearings for stream buffer variances. I'm familiar with that, so.
I don't think anybody up here wants to be the town of no or anything.
I wasn't saying you're a unicorn.
I know.
I wasn't going to get you off.
Yeah, and I'm not, I wasn't accusing you of, of, you know, speaking ill of us. I'm, I'm saying that because we don't want to be a restrict, overly restrictive town of no. So if that's something we need to look at, then that's something we need to look at. But right now, we're looking, we, we got to, you know, deal with what's in front of us. But I heard, I heard you. She said it might be good to look back to 2007 and see what was done then. I for one have no doubt in my mind that the, our request of the path is, is a contribute, a contributing hardship. I don't, I don't doubt that at all. I'm a little confused or disappointed or something that there was not good communication on whether you were going to need a variance or not. Whose job is it to go into a project and say, make, you know, you know, look at your checklist and say, are you going to need a buffer variance on this? Or did y'all assume that when we approved the project with the DRI for the previous development, that that had already been covered? I don't know, I, I just, I don't know.
I assume that at real estate agents, I assume that they have a due diligence, that the buyer has a due diligence period to do all that discovery.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know whose responsibility that was.
I agree.
But, but I, I don't like seeing that because I don't want it to be, I hate that it's a surprise on, on you all. I'm reading my notes here. Y'all ask questions if you have them.
My main concern is just the, to protect the environment and the future development that's going to happen and obviously I think that, that if the environment's going to be damaged, I mean, obviously the multi-use path is not going to be, you know, doesn't take that much importance. It's more the environment, but if we can, if we can protect the environment and, you know, the future development that's going to happen there and still get the multi-use path, I mean, I think that that's, that's a step in the right direction.
What, can I ask, what kind of path are you planning on doing through the, through these wetlands or whatever you got to go through? What, what kind of structure?
But we were asked to provide.
Is it like concrete?
I think we're sending asphalt. One thing we're, we're doing to try to mitigate some of the impact, so if you're familiar with the property, this area drops off significantly. And so what we're doing in that area, we're actually installing a retaining wall on the, on the property line side of the, of the multi-use path with, with handrails that would protect, you know, for fall protection. We're actually installing a wall on the, on the, on the building side and stepping it down through there. So there's lots of cost in, in doing that, that I don't know how you construct that without, without putting a bridge in if you do it another way. I mean, that, that's, so we're, we're doing it in a way that we think is probably the best way for long-term. If we were, if our client was wanting to install a bridge there and then dedicate that with a multi-use path, that's something that y'all would have to maintain at some point. The way we're doing it, it's really, the wall's going to be there, they're going to be done, maybe the handrails at some point, but it really is, I think, the best long-term solution. There's a lot of cost in doing that that we're going.
Yeah, and we've encountered, we've had some experience with how much those bridges cost, unfortunately. So again, I revisit, I get that we are creating some hardship with this path and that's, that's for a broad public interest. That, that's not just for, you know, that's not for you guys, that's for the town. And I appreciate your explanation of the different types of streams because I think I had in my head a different type of stream than an intermittent stream. I didn't know what we were talking about disturbing, but based on your definition of an intermittent stream, that at least helps me a little bit mentally. But I feel she has something she wants to add to that. Yes.
Nope, I don't need to hear the technical definition. I mean, the most simple definition of an intermittent stream is that it's flowing at least three or four months out of the year and it has, I looked at the soils, which show long-term, is there getting water there essentially. There was a lot of factors that were assessed. A ephemeral stream is a stream that only has water in it after it drains 72 hours, which is basically a ditch. These intermittent stream channels have different soil profiles and shapes and different things. I'm not going to go into the, unless you would really like me to, the technical definition, but I guess I felt like it was mischaracterized that intermittent streams simply have water flowing in them after a 72-hour rain event. I mean, their environmental report that they got in June, which also mentioned that local issuing authorities need to verify the buffers and that we're the, the final point of contact on that, did mention that a stream buffer variance potentially from the local issuing authority.
When, when was that?
That was June 6th, sorry. This report was prepared June 20th, 2022.
For them?
Correct, by their environmental consultant for the RB Corps Aquatic Resource delineation.
If you, if you just, if you get your variance, water has to go somewhere. What are you doing with that water that otherwise would be in that stream?
I think there, water gets, gets into the stream two ways. One is overland or one would be groundwater. So there's a couple of different ways, depending on how the water gets there. So when, when, when this is, when this would be constructed, assuming there's groundwater at the time, French drain would be installed along that stream bottom. So perforated pipe with gravel wrapped in filter fabric would be installed there. That's how the groundwater would be, had groundwater that was, that was working its way to that stream, that's how it would be captured and it would go to the same point of discharge, which that obviously treats that water pretty well too. And groundwater's clean when it comes out, but it would also be filtered through that. You also have water that gets to streams by overland flows. So when it rains, runs over the ground. So we would obviously have that and even more of that now because we have pervious surfaces. So the pervious surfaces would, would be routed, some of it would be routed directly to the wet extended detention ponds, some of it would be routed directly to the bio-retention ponds. The areas that are routed to the bio-retention ponds are then routed to the, to the wet extended detention ponds. The quick definition of what a wet extended, a wet extended detention pond has water in it at least three feet constant, or say constantly, other than drought where you may have some more evaporation. That water, the reason you do that is so that when you have water that comes back in there, anything that settles out in there doesn't resuspend, so helps discharge cleaner water. Obviously, you put a little bit of dirty water and clean water, cleaner water comes out than what came into it, right? So that would, that would water. If you had bigger rain events where you're talking massive, you know, massive storm events, up to 100-year storm, which, you know, one in 100-year storm, these detention ponds would hold that and then release it over time and release it really in the same points of the, of the property that the water is currently released. And so we, the rate, so the rate of runoff, so the amount of water you would see in that stream is what we're going to be maintaining by using those wet extended detention ponds. That would, that would, that's how we would treat that water, discharge at the same point, discharge at the same rate, charge at the same level of cleanness with the, with the water quality treatment we have. There's no treatment on the site right now, it's agricultural, it's had fertilizers dumped on that site, you know, there's lots of things in that soil, there's no treatment now, it just goes, it just runs. There are, there are, there are stream buffers, there's not stream buffers on all of this, there are, you know, some of this area has been cleared and has been used for environmental purposes.
Do you have a system in place to rectify that?
So your, your intention is to put the French drains in?
Yeah, if there's, you really can't construct it. I mean, we're happy to make that a condition. I mean, that, you can't construct it if there's water that needs, you have to do, you can't put water in, you can't put dirt and water and get any compaction. So that's, that's really the standard construction.
I'm very familiar with French drains and, and how they work and I think that's a good idea if it can be done, like you said, if it's not mushy, you know, mushy water and soil.
We're, we're happy to do that. I mean, I think most likely, you know, if you started this in the middle of the summer in a drought, you may not need it, but started right now or start in the wintertime.
So I'm, personally, I'm starting to see some examples of how hardships were created. I wish that word extreme weren't on there, but I can, if I were a businessman at, at your company, I would probably be happy that that word's on there because 20% is a lot, a lot of the return. Counselor, do we have the, I'm just trying, I'm trying to set the, the options up so that so the council has the ability to act. Do we have the option of saying, if you get your approval or waiver, whatever it is, from Army Corps or EPD or EPA? Kind of like, if it's good enough for them, it's good enough for us. Do we have the option of saying that? Or are they in a situation where, no, we have to have years before we can go to them?
For example, you could say something to the effect, you would grant the variance conditioned upon receiving approval from Army Corps and EPD. To the extent you don't get that approval, your variance doesn't go forward.
Okay, so I think Ms. Furz expressed some particular interest in one area. So if council wanted to, we could say what you just said plus what Ms. Furz said. Or obviously, everybody has the ability to make a motion that they desire.
So I think basically what we're asking here or going to say, or for me anyway, I'd like to make a motion that we consider approving the stream buffer and impervious surface setback variance requested by East Group based on the acceptance or the approval of their Army Corps and EPD applications.
And I would just make one minor edit to that. You're not considering it, you're doing it. You're making the motion to do that.
Yes, I am making that motion, that I would like to consider. As I said, the request for the applicant based on their approval and, you know, of the Army Corps and EPD application.
I don't know that his motion captured what Ms. Furz said. Did it?
Well, I think Councilmember Fur was really adding a condition of making sure the French drain was utilized in the construction, from what I can remember from our comments.
Yes, I was wondering if it was in their plan or if he just came up with it right now? You know, do they plan on doing it or have they planned on? See, that's what.
Shall I re-motion it?
Well, I think that was good enough for.
You made the motion to grant the variance conditioned upon EPD approval and Corps of Engineer approval and the use of French drains in the construction.
That is right.
Is that adequate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You had, do I need to, if I want to hear from her, do I get my second first?
Yes, you do.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right. Did you have something you want to share with us or ask us?
Oh, just namely that there will, so for the kind of infiltration you're talking about with a French drain, it's like the same concept, but they will still have to, well, if the variance is granted or regardless of if the variance is granted, they will probably due to how much water's coming through, it's the same concept of a French drain, but not quite the same. So I'm not sure how we'd want to put that into the variance because they've got to meet certain engineering standards for things that were designed to do the same function, if that makes sense. And to restrict it to French drain would be getting into the engineering, but we can certainly make sure they have appropriate infiltration.
And that's fine with me. Since he brought up French drains, I thought that's what they had planned to do.
And that's the same concept. It was just a good point of reference.
Yeah, and I didn't want to get us down a rabbit trail that was unnecessary. I thought that her point to that was useful in how we are sitting here trying to work with the petitioner. That's why, so.
Because I, well, am I allowed?
You are.
I'm not really happy about doing this variance, but I understand we've created this hardship. And if you take the right measures and everything, going through those wetlands and things, I'm okay with it. But, you know, I've seen some sloppy jobs. And I wouldn't want it to come to that, but y'all seem like y'all know what you're doing and.
Any other discussion? We, you know, we talked some about precedent earlier. And we do have to take that into consideration. You know, what if right across the street somebody wants to do this and we say no? And they look back at this. Somehow we have to show that we have created a hardship. And I think that's what we've tried to do tonight. Hopefully, everybody walks away from here thinking that we tried to work together to come to a fair solution. So we have a motion, a second, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, that only took about an hour and 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It would have taken an hour and 10 minutes if you hadn't asked for five more minutes.
Oh, yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
They're afraid of you.
All right. Unless Scott is about to make a magical appearance, I think this next item is going to be presented by someone else.
I'll take care of that, sir. So the next item, ladies and gentlemen, is consideration to renew the debris monitoring contract with Tetra Tech Incorporated. Debris monitoring contracts, the purpose is, of course, you know, if we have a major storm event or any other type of event that, you know, creates, you know, downed trees or the need to remove debris, we have a contract with an on-call entity that, you know, is quick to respond and help out. So we've had this agreement with Tetra Tech since 2021. And there is a provision in the contract for up to two additional one-year renewal periods. This is a one-renewal for the first renewal period, and Scott is requesting that we approve that. This is in conjunction, again, although, if I'm not mistaken, I know this is under, we're piggybacking off the county's contract, and I believe all the other municipalities have done it as well.
Remind me, do we have a cost to this to keep them on retainer?
I don't believe there's, it's just pay as you go.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion that we renew the debris monitoring contract with Tetra Tech Incorporated for another year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, next item is consideration to purchase an EnviroSite pole camera for environmental, from Environmental Product Group. This pole camera was included in the current budget. It provides the staff the ability to see down pipes without having to go into confined spaces for obvious reasons. That's a good thing for us and for staff. This particular camera will be purchased from Environmental Projects Group through Sourcewell Contract for $18,784.14. It also includes a laser measuring tool and pressurization kit. Funding is from the Seward Enterprise Fund. And we recommend approval for the amount of $18,784.14.
I guess you want a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would recommend that we award the EnviroSite pole camera purchased from Environmental Products Group through Sourcewell for $18,784.14.
Eighteen.
Good deal, though, I like.
We just saved 3,000 bucks.
I was trying to save some money.
It's a good try, Ms. Gloria.
I'm sorry, $18,784.14. Yeah, I'm not seeing very well with these glasses on. Maybe I can see better if I take them off.
Got to give Gordon back his glasses.
Okay, motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, the last thing, I believe. Consideration to award project number PW 2022-02 a rebid of the 2022 roadside tree pruning and removal project to Zamora Tree Service. Council approves, approved in the Public Works budget this year. Roadside tree pruning and removal. This helps with better line of sight and safer road conditions. This project includes sections of Tyrone Road, Sonola Road, and Castlewood Road. The project was originally bid on September 14th, but the two bids were determined to be non-responsive. Then the project was re-advertised and rebid. The rebids were taken on November 2nd. The low bidder being Zamora Tree Service at a price of $29,000. Funding for this is general fund, Public Works budget. We recommend approval. Has a different fee here at 16,900, I believe the correct number is. Let me double check. Yeah, it's 29,000 is the correct number.
So does this mean those are the only roads that they're going to?
Yes, that was all that was included in the scope. Here I have, I don't know how to rotate this around. So the scope of the project was several sites on Castlewood, a site on Sonola Road, and a site on Tyrone Road.
One of those companies does need to work.
Yeah. Yeah.
This for a whole year?
That I don't know, I don't know if this is the extent of the budget for this type of work. I don't know if this is a phased project, but I believe this is, I think that's this year's work, yes. I could be wrong, but I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have enough information on that.
Budget year.
This budget year, yes.
Is there a motion?
And, sorry, sir.
This is budgeted money.
It is, it is budgeted. And I believe what, you know, I know a lot of times, you know, the Public Works guys go out and they do the smaller stuff. This is, these are things that have been determined to be larger, a larger scope than what our guys can handle. So that's probably, so it's not to say that these are the only areas we're going to clear. It's just the bigger areas that we needed somebody with a bigger, to handle a bigger scope.
I would imagine that traffic control and all that comes into play, especially with these particular sites.
Right. Now is there a motion?
I make a motion that we award project number PW-2022-02 to, for the tree pruning and removal project to Zamora Tree Service for the fee of $29,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this next public comment period is about any matter of any type. Same rules apply. Hearing none, are there any staff comments?
I have one. Just real quick, we got an update this week on the, an email yesterday, as a matter of fact, on the Shamrock Park Playground update. As y'all know, they've been working diligently over there to get the new stuff in. So they say, weather permitting, they're hoping to wrap up the playground equipment on Friday, tomorrow, mulch on Tuesday, and have the concrete poured on Wednesday. The only delay that was out of their control is a bench, or their bench vendor. They're expecting that, those products to be here mid-December, but that obviously won't affect the actual playground. So they'll work, if necessary, they'll work on a different solution for the benches. But at any rate, that's where we are. So hoping that at least for the Christmas tree lighting event on the 27th, that the playground will be usable. So glad to have that closed out.
And did we get the baby swings and stuff?
We're going to work on that. The, this project was designed as a, you know, five to 12, but I have talked to them about adding baby swings. I've also asked them for pricing on mats that weren't included to go under the swings and under the slides, so that they don't get rutted out. So, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do a change that's going to add one or two baby swings at some point in the near future. But it's, when we land on it next week, it'll be five to 12. But we have recognized a need for the other types of swings.
Any other staff comments? Any council comments? It's my understanding there's a need for executive session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one, two, three items. Was there any minutes to review, Dee? One item for personnel and two items for real estate.
Okay, is there a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor, do you have anything to say to us?
I do, actually, Mr. Mayor. We have before you this evening an employment agreement with the town manager. His contract with the town is scheduled to expire at the end of this year. This proposed agreement is for a three-year term beginning January 2023, running for three consecutive years. It's under basically the same terms and conditions as his current contract with some exceptions. Any questions about that, be happy to answer them, but I'll provide that to you for your consideration this evening.
Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the contract for the town manager as written.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We stand adjourned.